I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, the AT and TU verse, the City of Gaston YouTube channel, and WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair will call on City Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed? We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Ryan Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for life. We thank you for abundant life. And God, we thank you for your blessings on this great city. God, I pray for these leaders today. I pray for the mayor and his administration and each council representative for their constituents. God, we just pray that today, whatever we do, will bring glory to you. And God, as we remember the great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., one of his favorite quotes, "The time is always right to do what is right." So, God, we ask that you will help us to do that, to take that step today. And we promise when all is said and done to give you the praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The chair will entertain a motion to approve minutes of the Education Recreation Committee work session and council meeting that was held July 15.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of January the 11th through the 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor. Unfinished business. We have a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 7:33 Brookside Drive in District 3, and this resolution was tabled for seven days on January the 15th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I would like to substitute the new resolution for the old resolution, And I ask that we approve and abate this new resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
We took out the name of an individual that did not own the property, that his name showed up as an arrow, and that's why we changed the resolution.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
On the motion to substitute the resolution, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to substitute.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the substituted resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution authorizing public hearing on electrical code before consideration of the council as required by the state law. And this relates to the adoption of the 2017 addition of the National Electrical Code. The hearing will be held during the regular council meeting at 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, February the 19th. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing a change order, number one, for bid number 3382 for the re-roofing project at the East Gaston Library, even starred in the Big Brother Big Sister building. This is for an additional $1,456, thereby adjusting the total contract price, and this is with Midwestern Commercial Roofers Incorporated to $82,726. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is authorizing agreement with the telephone communication incorporated, and this is for equipment installations to make the city phone system compatible with the alarm monitoring system at the Pierce Training Center, and the amount is $337.49. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Alabama Student Bass Fishing Association, and this is for the city to sponsor the state high school fishing tournaments to be held March 23rd, 2019, and a date to be scheduled in 2020, and the amount is $5,000 per tournament. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business? Department reports, committee and boards, we have one, but is Ms. Gaither here? Okay, I would like for her to come up. She talked about the warming stations and pre-council, so I'd just like for her to come and give us a report.
Yes, as you know, with the extreme cold that we had this past weekend and on the holiday, we did open warming centers in the city of Gaston, and we serviced 47 individuals there at the Elliott Community Center. And we do that after the Salvation Army becomes full or those individuals are not capable of going to the Salvation Army. Multiple city departments were helpful in making this a success, and I really need to mention Craig Scott, who spent the night there, at least two nights, and I'm sure of. He's our Gaston Public Libraries Director, but he's also our voluntary organization's active in disaster chairperson, and coordinated a lot of the events for feeding and for staffing, making sure that there were enough warm clothing to send those who don't have a home or did not have adequate heat back out into our community. Several questions have been asked already, are we going to have to open this weekend? And no, the normal criteria is that we are 32 degrees or below with a wind chill that is 20 or below for more than a 24-hour period. So, we had a multiple day of a roller coaster and event, and it would have been more confusing to open and close and open and close, so we just remained open that entire weekend. I want to thank everybody that really helped. So, thank you.
Okay, and you also introduced an intern. Would you come up, please?
Right.
He's local, and I didn't ask him up there, but I knew Alfred Jackson, but you seem to be awfully young. Are you related to another Alfred Jackson that I may know?
No, ma'am, I'm not.
Okay.
No, I'm not. Okay, once again, my name is Alfred Jackson, EMA intern, representing Jacksonville State University graduate student, and I am from Gaston, Alabama.
Thank you. We're very proud of you. At this time, I would like to ask for unanimous consent. We have members of the IDA here, Mayor Larry Means, and we also have Mr. Frankie Davis from the mayor's office to come, but I ask for unanimous consent if they can speak to us today.
Second.
Yes.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to allow the individuals to speak, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous consent.
I think, Mr. Davis, you're on first.
Hey, Larry, don't worry, they always save the best for last, don't worry.
For sure.
That's why I'm in the middle.
I'm Frankie Davis for the mayor's office, and Mayor Means is president of our local IDA, that's the Gaston Edwah Industrial Development Authority. He wants to talk to you today about some things that the IDA has done and is doing in the future, as well as a personnel issue, and I won't take that from him. But I have known the person a long time, the mayor has, and we had to do a lot of praying about it, but we know that he's of utmost qualifications, really, not to slight the prayer, I shouldn't have said that. But anyway, he's got a varied experience as far as government goes, state, federal, local, and banking and finance and so on and so forth, so y'all have his resume in front of you, and I'd like to introduce Mayor Larry Means. Thank you.
Thank you, Frankie. First of all, I want to thank y'all for allowing me to be on the agenda. The second, for allocating funds for the IDA. When Frankie asked me to do this, I said, like, I need something else to do, but I enjoy it so much, and it's been very rewarding so far, and to see the process and see potential industry come in here and meet with them and the questions they ask, and it's tough, they come back and forth, back and forth, wanting things, but today, I want to thank y'all for providing the funding because we could not do it. I want to say something about, Bill Green is here. Now, he's been taking the reins since Mike McCain left for three and a half years, I guess, and he's done a great job with some projects and everything, and I appreciate him. This is no reflection on him today, but I am president of the IDA. I'm going to introduce the new director in just a few minutes, but y'all have had his resume, and I'm afraid if I read it, Madam President would probably call me down and cut my time off, probably, so I'll let y'all just read it then. But anyway, the problem, I'm going to mention some things that are probably not real popular right now with me. First, I want to say the Mayor's Association passed unanimous resolution, the county commission, and all the mayors in the county, all of them unanimously supporting our IDA, not the counties or anyone else, because they knew that we've always helped other cities. They don't just help Gaston, they help, like, I've got a project in a title right now that they're going to have to come to the IDA about, big project. And so, they know that they get help from the IDA here, so they've chosen to pass unanimous resolution. I thought that was great for them to do that. We had, and I think I told this last time, we had two members on the IDA, and they've been shocked, and they happened to be the two that got defeated in the election. I don't know if that was the reason they did it, you know, because right after that happened, and I told the same thing, actually, Mr. Hildebrand called me and said, have you seen that website? But this man had called me about a business, it wasn't in Gaston or Tyler, and he said, I don't know who to talk to, and I said, what do you mean? And he said, well, Edwah County's got a website up, and they're advertising for an executive director. I didn't know what he was talking about, and I have to say, I've not talked to anybody that knew, you know, out in the public that knew about this. Let me say upfront, this is their right and privilege to do what they want to. The problem with this is now, the exact thing I just talked about with the gentleman calling, they don't know who to go to now. So, it's going to be a problem for both of us. All they've done is create a problem, and this alliance, I don't know what that is, those two guys that got defeated are on that thing, and I don't know what it is, I haven't talked to them. My main problem with the way they handled this, we had, we came within a week or so, I mean, after they were on the board before their election, no communication with anyone that I can find on the board or anywhere. We were just complete shock to all of us. That being said, they have the right and privilege to do it if they want to, and that just made me, and I know Frankie, more aggressive about getting us as executive director. Let me tell you how hard that is. We went to EDPA, if y'all know what that is, it's in Birmingham, and the vice president, ex-vice president Alabama power, Steve Spencer, is a friend of mine, he's on that board, and we went to him, talked to him, and talked to him, and for our last year, just to kind of see if we could find someone, and most of those guys stay in their position, they don't want to leave. They make good money, but when I got to, I'll just call his name now, David Hooks, when I got to him, the exact words of a friend of mine there said, if you can get David Hooks, you better get him. Let me tell you a little bit about David, and I told him some of this stuff won't be the truth, so we're bragging on him, so just, he was only, he was the youngest person on the city council when I got elected in 1976 in Alabama. And I'll tell one story about him, you know, he was a fireball, aggressive, and two years later, he gets involved in the middle of this thing on the Fob James campaign. I said, you crazy? He can't win? Well, look, he won. Of course, David went to Montgomery and has done a lot of things since then. And the confusing part, a lot of things about this IDA thing, the county gets 24% of the industry that comes in here that goes to education without doing a thing. I mean, they don't have to do a thing, just whatever y'all do or Gaston does, Gaston IDA. This is, it's kind of confusing. The main thing, I think they just didn't have contact, we could have worked so much better together, you know, everybody talks about working together, but after, you know, the horse or the cow's out of the barn, it's a little late to do the working together, and we hope we still can. I don't know, we've got some new friends, I think, on the county commission that are willing to sit down with us and talk to us, and I've actually talked to one of them, but that being said, today, I'm going to pass out the press release, I've got it right here, but I'm going to pass out the, can somebody pass this? This is on David. David's a local boy, kind of wanted to come back home, his parents are older, they're good friends of mine, lifelong friends, and his children are grown, and we actually approached him, and, you know, it's a different thing, he'd been doing something different, but he's been, he was a DECA director, one of the members of our board, when I was, called him personally, I said, you know, I've got this guy, David Hooks, and she said to me, if he's been a DECA director, I'm for him. And he was during the Folks' administration, worked for the TVA as industrial recruitment, so he's been there. Let me tell you one thing you're going to learn about him, I hadn't been around him in a good while, when we started talking this last year, and he's still, I'm amazed, he's gotten older, he's not 21 again, but I was amazed at how aggressive, personable, is that some, that's some of those things that I hated to say, the smart part, and I put that in there, but I didn't know if I really meant it, but he has connections, he's the best, one of the best I've seen, he doesn't care who's in office, about having connections in Montgomery, Washington, just, I think he's the perfect person for this. Now, we've done with that, and you know, there's not, no offense to him, but there's not many Mike Mcains, there's no one around, really, I found that out by trying to look, but he's, I think he's a perfect fit for this, there's no laziness about him, he just, he'll come in full bore the first thing. Now, he'll want to learn some things that may have changed since, you know, when he was doing industrial development, but let me read this. David Hooks to lead the Gaston Edwah IDA. The Gaston Edwah County Industrial Development Authority is proud to announce that their new executive director, James David Hooks. Hooks is an innovative business leader with extensive economic development, public finance, industrial recruitment experience. Hooks comes to Gaston from the University of Alabama in Birmingham, where he was the director of innovation at the Edge of Chaos Collaborative Creative Group, designed to spur innovation at UAB School of Public Health and beyond. We're glad to be able to bring David home. He's come a long way since serving on the Tyler City Council, we will always be proud to see David's accomplishments from a distance. We're excited to give him a chance to work for Gaston Edwah County and all other municipalities. David brings a wealth of experience back with him, and we can't wait to get him started, and that's for me. Hooks has a strong record of accomplishment and a success in the public sector. Dealing with the unique challenges of public finance and policies, he has a, he was a key leader in helping Jesson County get back on its feet after bankruptcy, and if y'all kept up with that, that was a big deal, and David was very involved in that. It will be a tremendous advocate for Gaston Edwah County, bringing our unique advantages to the forefront of industrial recruitment and economic development conversion, conversation. I'm looking forward to working with David to build our industrial development momentum. Gaston is in a great position for growth and good jobs and new industry. He will take our recruitment and innovative companies and new ventures to the next level, says Mayor Sherman Gatten. The Gaston Edwah County, the Gaston Edwah Industrial Development Authority is committed to recruiting and enhancing the economy of Gaston Edwah County. Gaston Edwah IDA has a strong board with representatives from various communities in Edwah County area. Hooks will join Assistant Bill Green as IDA bills to the excessive economic development in the past and looks to ensure future growth. Something I said in there, this is the best board with diversity, just everything, with educators, business people. Come to a meeting sometime, I mean, we've got the best people to make a decision, and I was proud that they went along with us unanimously. You know, a lot of times, you have to take people's word for it, just that they know them, but at this time, I'd like to let David say a few words to them. Thank you very much for allowing me.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and that concludes this part of the service. If you'd like to join us at Graveside, come on. I feel like my funeral's been preached, thank you, Larry. If y'all will just re-release that press release at my funeral, that'll be fine. I look forward to this opportunity, I look forward to moving back home. I've been gone since, as Larry mentioned, I really moved off in '78, I've done multiple things, most of those things are directly involved with economic development and industrial recruitment. I've done public finance in the banking sector, but again, most of my public finance background was around doing municipal deals and transactions with industrial clients. So, I definitely feel qualified to do this job. I think that the city of Gaston and Edwah County has done a great job over the last 12 years, really building the foundation of moving this community forward. I look forward to trying to unify that working relationship across the county. I have, I looked through the list of all the mayors, and I think with the exception of Walnut Grove, I think I know every single mayor personally in the county and have a personal relationship with him over the last 30 years. So, and I look forward to getting to know each of you better, and I look forward to working with you. I intend on moving back just as quickly as I can sell my home and move, find a home here, and so, I'll be happy later to address any questions you might have and have a chance to meet with you privately. Thank you very much, and I look forward to this opportunity.
Any of you all have any questions for him? I remember remarks by the mayor and council. We'll start with, we'll start with Councilman Reed.
Thank you. I've known David a long time, and I'll tell you what, Dave, we're extremely lucky to have you come here. I did want to thank Bill Green for holding that port down for three and a half years, and I know he's going to be an asset to you in that office. So, I'm looking forward to working with you in any way we can, just welcome aboard. I wanted to announce a Public Safety Committee meeting for tomorrow at 1:00 here in the City Hall. We'll be covering the incarceration of city prisoners, so we invite anybody who's interested, the committee will be here for any questions, and we'll be discussing.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Councilwoman. President, I'd just like to say, Larry, I was still right when I said the best was last, I meant in the middle. Like, if you're there. David, we do, welcome your board, Bill, has did a real good job over there, so y'all have worked together pretty good, I'm hoping. I did want to turn the thoughts just for a minute about the Board of Education election. This council today said they're going to speed this up as fast as we can to get this vote going, but there's a few things that has to be done. The city clerk, Iva Nelson, has to get some stuff in the paper, probably, we have to set the days, I'm thinking it's probably going to have to be a 60-day comment in the paper that everybody know, then you'll have a two-week qualifying, and then you'll have four weeks to run, and then we've got to put in consideration about if there's a runoff or something, so we'd have to put that in there also. So, it's not going to be a turnaround for tomorrow, you're not going to be able to vote tomorrow, but she's getting all the stuff ready for us, that request of the council president, and in a week or so, we should know what, where we're going to head and when it will be. Also, too, we'll canvass the votes, if I'm not mistaken, next Tuesday at 12:00. That's all I have.
Councilman Wilson?
No comments.
Councilman Back?
Just want to extend a welcome to Mr. Hooks, we're glad to have you home and excited that you're back home and here with us, look forward to getting to know you, because I, we just met just a few minutes ago, but I anticipate a very strong start for you and then an even stronger tenure while you're here, so we're glad to have you. Thank you so much.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President. I also said congratulations to Mr. Hooks and forward to working with you, and also thanks to Mr. Bill Green for holding it down, and I'm sure y'all have worked well together. I also want to thank everyone that came out to the Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast and also the Martin Luther King Program at the venue. We had a great turnout and a great programs on both. Now, I want to talk to you a little bit about something that's near and dear to my heart with all these job fairs. I just received this from the Career Center General Manager, the preliminary unemployment numbers from December of 2018. It's 3.7% in the United States, 4.0% in the state of Alabama, 3.7% in Edwah County, 3.7% in Gaston metro area. Yearly unemployment average is 4.1%. Unemployed persons in the Gaston metro area is 1,589, up from 1,560 in November. The AGL job search openings within a 25-mile radius of the city of Gaston is 871 jobs. 50-mile radius of Gaston is 2,830 jobs, and that do not includes Birmingham, because Birmingham is more than 50 miles. The job fairs held at the Gaston Career Center in December was nine, they had nine job fairs with key employers such as KTH, Prince Metal Stampin', Cook Foods, Department of Corrections, Buffalo Rock, and many others. And also, KTH will have another job fair scheduled for the month of February 2019. So, when you listen to people and they tell you that we don't have any jobs here, we have plenty of jobs. And I always say this, it may not be the job you want, but you need to take the job that's available, then you can get your education and get qualified to move up to a better job and make more money. And if we put all, if we filled all these jobs, that would be more tax dollars in the city, be more tax dollars going to education, and we could do a lot more things with that tax money. So, thank you.
Councilman, will you?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just echo Councilman Worthy's sentiment regarding the jobs. For many who don't know, that 3.7% number in many markets represents something close to, if not at, full employment. And so, that's something that should be, should be highlighted and noted for the area. So, if you come across anyone who, in this market, is telling you that there are no job opportunities, they don't know what they're talking about. So, I think that's about as plainly as I can put it. I mean, if they, if they're telling you there's no opportunity, they have no idea what they're talking about, and you should probably walk away from them, because, because again, they're kind of leading blindly. Mr. Hooks, welcome. We're excited to have you. I think, one of the things I think that we've tried to demonstrate as a council, and I, you know, and I don't, I don't ever want to try to speak for this body, but, but I think as a general rule, anytime we support an appointment, and I think we've got an example of that sitting in the back of a room, it's important to know someone that's credentialed and capable. and capable on day one, and you definitely represent that. I think it was a very good comparison, Mayor Means, when you talked about, when you talked about Mike McCain, because likewise, Mike McCain came with a high level of credentials. Having worked in state government in a similar capacity, he brought to the table a number of very useful and meaningful credentials, and Mr. Hooks is gonna do the same for us, gives Gadsden automatic credibility, and that's important. That's, that's, that's very important in industrial recruitment space. So again, welcome, and we're excited about that. Just a couple of additional things to know, to do, want to send our thoughts and prayers out to the family of the slain officer in Mobile, Mr. Sean Tudor. Again, it can't be said enough. Every day, those officers suit up and they go out into the communities, taking, taking on the risk associated with that profession, protecting us in hopes of coming back home to their families. And sometimes I think we miss just how, how risky, especially in today's environment, how risky that profession is. So please continue to pray for our officers as they, as they protect us. Want to extend my thoughts and prayers also to the family of Ms. Doris Weatherly, who passed on Saturday. Ms. Weatherly is a near and dear friend of mine, and her family likewise is, is near and dear to me, so we're gonna be praying for them as they make it through this difficult time. Thanks to the Gadsden Public Library for their work in issuing the STEM Kit initiative and driving that STEM Kit initiative. Again, that's a big, that's a big need in our community. The STEM areas represent a gap for us, and I can see our school superintendent nodding his head, because he knows that the STEM areas represent a gap for us in the education of our children and preparing them for tomorrow's careers. And I think if you corner Mr. Hooks, he'll tell you the same thing. So it's a great, again, we really appreciate the library for stepping up and doing their part as it relates to that. Lastly, do want to, you know, as Councilman Worthy mentioned, do want to thank those who supported, and either with, with your finances, with your commitments, or even with your time in attending all of the various MLK events. It's a very important holiday, and again, I always want to encourage people to continue to support that and continue to drive the message. Thank you, Brian, for one of his more famous quotes, I believe, and that is, "Time is always right to do what's right." So, so again, we appreciate that, and that's all I have, Madam President.
Mayor.
I've known David since he played football at Alma Hinson. I think he was in probably the eighth or ninth grade. And a friend of mine, Mitchell Troop, we coached together over there a couple of years, and we weren't too much older than the players. And if we were too rough on you, I'm gonna apologize. But David has had a, known him practically ever since then. He's always advanced to different levels, government, business, has a great background, being over a DECA. That's where all the money is in Montgomery, is a DECA. And anyway, I know he's gonna do a good job here, because we got plenty of things that are ready. We just need some guidance on how to get some more people here. I will say that since I've been in office, we have, the IDA, it was strictly here in Gadsden, and we pay about $400 and something thousand a year to keep it going. But the IDA, if anybody came and wanted to open up something or some kind of jobs or any investments or whatever they wanted, it didn't matter to us if it was in Tyler or North Gadsden, wherever it was. We've never tried to just keep everything right here in Gadsden, because anything that happens in the county is gonna be good for everybody. And, you know, I know there's a couple of things out there where some people are looking at doing another IDA, and I don't know how confusing that'll be with the state, but we've always been open to wherever they wanted to go. If somebody had the property, we would try to put them on it. And we're glad to have him here and looking forward to working with him. I think it's gonna be really, really good. Thanks.
I forgot to thank a couple people. First of all, thank you, Madam President, for attending the prayer breakfast, and also you, Mr. Beck, for saying one of the prayers for us. And we also had, for the first time, our Senator, Andrew Jones, he came, and also Representative Isible for District 28. They attended both programs. So we want to say thank you to the elected officials.
You wanted to say about them?
Forgot to mention that this Monday at 5:30 at the venue, District Four, my district, and District One, Chairman Tolls, District, we're having a joint community meeting. My district is in three distinct neighborhoods. 28% of the electorate vote for District Four is in East Gadsden, so I'm gonna have three separate community meetings. I'm gonna have an East Gadsden meeting, I'm gonna have a Country Club in Clubview meeting at Euro Brown Elementary Lunchroom on Jan, on February the 11th, and then on February 25th, my downtown section, which is the Edenwood area, we're gonna have a meeting at First Baptist Church's Family Life Center. But this Monday, 5:30, if you're in East Gadsden, in District One or District Four, 5:30 is gonna be a tour of the new venue, then at 6:00, we'll have our community meeting. And then I'll, as we get closer to those other dates, I will remind District Four voters and constituents about those meetings as well. Thank you.
I would just like to, I know Councilman Cannon has addressed the school board election, and I know that there are a lot of people out there in radio land and everywhere else is expecting a lot of things for us to say, but I would just like to say, the people, the small amount of people that did vote, they voiced what they wanted, and the city council has been diligent in doing what they were supposed to do. We follow the law. Maybe some of the citizens out there haven't read the law, and it says that an election will be coming up that's practical. So we're not gonna wait four years from now to have an election. You will have an opportunity to elect a new school board. Our chief election officer will be responsible for setting up the timelines. It will come as soon as possible, but we want it to be done correctly, and we want it to be done right. And the same enthusiasm that people have had and all the rhetoric that they've had about the school board, I really hope that they will get involved in the schools. Our superintendent is here, and he wants bodies, as well as your talk, to be involved in the schools to help our children. So now, let's put our talking, our rhetoric, where we've done all this talking, let's put it into action now. Now that we have gotten an elected school board, let's move forward, and let's help our children. In fact, that's what you say that it's all about. So let's continue to work to help. The only travesty, and I said it in the paper, and I say it again, the only travesty of all of this is less than 2,000 people came out to vote of a population of 36,000. That's a shame, and we should be embarrassed, and we should, I don't know, feel sorry for ourselves, but anyway, we should look at ourselves. If we really care about our city, then we should come and do better than what we're doing. On next Tuesday, which is the 29th, the city council will begin at noon instead of 11:00, and the work session will be at 11:00. Instead of our work session being at 10, our work session will be at 11, and our council meeting will be at 12, and this is so we can certify the election of January the 22nd. Yep, yes.
One thing I would point out on the elections, and Michael? On the election for the school board, when I was coaching at Livingston and in graduate school, I did, had to do a paper in one of my classes, elective board versus an appointed board. And when I got through with the first one, I thought, "Well, that's the way to go." And then when I got through with the second one, I thought, "That's the way to go." It really just boils down to who the person is that gets on there. That's it.
So just make sure that you look out, listen out, as to what it takes to qualify to run. You have to be 21 years of age. You have to live in the district, and you have to live there for one year. You just can't come from Atlanta and then qualify and then run for a school board. So you have to live there for a year, and you have to be a member of that district. If nothing else, I-
Mr. President, may I ask you a question? I was just thinking, if you gotta be 18 to vote, how come you couldn't be 18 to run for that Board of Education? Can you answer? I don't know, I'm just asking a question.
Because this is what the legislature passed, and then, and that, that was one of the qualifications. It had two qualifications. I don't know if I can pronounce that word right, city clerk. You have to be 21 years of age, and you have to-
Not have been convicted of a crime involving moral turpitude.
We don't know what turpitude is, if I hadn't looked it up yet, but maybe they're turned, is that a legal term?
Yes, it is. It's 46 of those crimes, and it's listed.
So if you want to know what that is, then you can go to the law book, or you can call our city attorney, I just threw him under the bus, and find out what they are. But anyway, those are the qualifications that you have to have to run for the school board. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Hold on. Do you want to say something?
I don't need to say what I'm gonna say.
You should say it.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Look at here.